Okay, good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, 1:04 PM. My name is Tim Mencer, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards. I'm sure Klaus is not present. We have public virtual attendance in the Thurston County YouTube channel, and County Manager Leonard Hernandez is here along with Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We have two items for this agenda. One is an update from the Assessor's Office. We have County Assessor Stephen Drew, and then we have an update from the Coroner's Office with Coroner Warnock. So Assessor is up first, and welcome.
Thank you.
Turn it over to the Assessor, or is there anything we need to address up front?
Nothing we need to address up front, thanks for checking.
Well, you all know who I am, but for the listening public, and I assume there's eight or nine folks out there, I am Steve Drew, I'm the Thurston County Assessor. My office is responsible for valuing all property in the county for tax purposes. We're required to inspect all properties at least once every six years in the county. We also set business personal property tax, which is a mathematic process based on voluntary reporting of assets. We also administer all of the exemptions to property tax, virtually all of them. Some of them are actually administered by Department of Revenue, but the senior exemption program, the current use ag program, that's all administered in our office. As you know, and I'm not here to complain, simply to state the state of the Assessor's Office. As you know, we requested some FTEs in the last budgetary cycle due to the wave of senior exemption applications primarily that we're seeing this year because the thresholds changed by about $10,000. That had a couple of consequences, but most significant of which is there's just a wave of new applications. And the application process is a lengthy one because the statutes surrounding that exemption are extremely specific as to how you calculate household income under the law for the exemption program. And so that means that interviews can be five minutes and/or can be multiple interviews if people need to bring in further documentation. So it's a very time-consuming process. So having not received those FTEs and in fact had lost two FTEs, it has been a very, very challenging year. As always, we're approaching that in good cheer and applying ourselves and trying to find every efficiency. This challenge is amplified this year. You also took helpful action, right? You also funded a mobile assessor. I think I got that name wrong, but that's a software acquisition, yes.
The last couple, I think everybody's kind of joined us up here. Can we, can I invite the coroner to come sit at the table? Is that, isn't that how we've done the other elected?
Not how we've done it, he's welcome too.
Oh, okay.
A mole's happened, sitting in the corner.
I remember.
Like forty minutes.
Okay. Maybe I'm confusing that with the directors. Okay. My bad, sorry.
Okay. So that mobile assessor, that now goes into the field here in the next few weeks with, for the next REVAL cycle. And so we will get a significant benefit from that, but we got no benefit from that in the last cycle, right? Secondly, with two cycles of oblique and ortho imagery now available, halfway through this past appraisal year, we did get a benefit from that for half the appraisal year, but we didn't for the other half of the appraisal year. Next year, we'll get a full year benefit from that. So I'm not saying that we aren't going to need FTEs next year, we need FTEs, but we will be better equipped next year to get done timely. REVAL notices by statute are to go out first of June. It's absolutely impossible for us to achieve that this year with our staffing level and the wave of work that we had. The choice is not a good one, right? Either you send out REVAL notices on time when you're not ready and your values are junk, or you continue to work for another few months and a lot of overtime invested in that. And you get your values correct at the very end of the period when we can certify values and not upset the budgetary process for the county and all of the taxing districts. And that's where we are, and we are on that schedule. A series of meetings this morning to clean up some of the values. You know, it's highly important, for instance, that as we analyze all the sales for all real estate, particularly all residential real estate, you have to spend significantly more time dialing in on the proper values for single-family residences that are valued north of a million dollars. Or the consequence almost always is that the ratio, that is the percentage driven by the value that we put on the property as compared to the real market value, the ratio ends up being lower than it does for three, four, $500, $1,000 homes. And the consequence of that is a tax break for the very wealthy. And so every county assessor is cognizant of that and must apply a lot more energy per parcel to make sure that we get those properties ratios to where they're reasonably consistent with the ones that are really easy. And they're, and so to define really easy, when you're in a development that was developed roughly at the same time, maybe Jubilee, or maybe some of the other ones along Marvin, they're all roughly the same age. It's one or two builders, there's a lot of sales in the development itself, the style is pretty much the same. It's much easier to get a very consistent, correct ratio in those neighborhoods, that's the easiest, right? The very rural, unusual property with all sorts of plus and negative influences, you might have a view, but you might have a wetland, right? Or you might have protected area, but you also might have agricultural area and exemption, so some are very complicated. But the real effort to achieve equity, vertical equity depending on value, is invested at the top end. And that's what we're focusing on today, is getting that finished so that when we go to the printer and send out REVAL notices, the values are just for all concern. So it's been the same lift as in other years, far more challenging for us without adequate staff and with the challenges that the market has presented. Now, on the commercial side, it's a more difficult challenge because there aren't a lot of sales. And you can look to Seattle or other places in the country where commercial buildings are selling for, and we've read the headlines, are selling for a fraction of their former market value, former assessed value, some are. And that's true in Seattle to some extent because the big dot-coms have moved out of Seattle to Bellevue or working much more remotely. That shift that we read about in the paper, it takes time for it to affect Thurston County. And as near as I can suss out, the reason for that is that so much of our commercial property occupancy and value is driven by state leases. And state leases are more stable than private leases. And so this was, it was a similar effect when we had the economic downturn. And we got, you know, real concerned here that we were going to crash abruptly, and we didn't, you know? And it's just, the reason is that we had all of the state employees as our economic engine for retail sales and restaurant consumption. And when the state cuts its budget, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't fill vacancies, right? And they don't lay everybody off in mass layoffs. And so when the economic downturn happened, the businesses lost employees immediately, people lost their jobs and then lost their buying power and their confidence in it. In Thurston County, because state and government employees make up such a high percentage of our population, they both, that both didn't happen and there wasn't a lot of fear that it was going to happen. So it's sometimes a real benefit in the measurement of the work we do to be in Thurston County. When the values are going up and King County newspapers are saying, "The values went up 100%," you know, and ours go up, they went up 20% at the, you know, peak that same year. Taxpayers, most of them, I'm not going to speak for everybody, when your value goes up 20%, it's a shock, but when you're reading that it's going to go up 100% and it goes up 20%, you kind of, you know, take a breath and you're... And so when the values are going up in King County, and that's what the news is telling us, and ours go up more slowly and not, don't spike as far as King County, there's less concern. When the values are coming down, because King County went up so highly, now the headlines are that the values are coming down last year and this year significantly. Well, ours are climbing about 5% or somewhere in there. And so folks are less happy because they were expecting more of a dip. So we have, we're in kind of an interesting place geographically in the state. Being in the state capital is a great benefit to our stability. It offers some challenges for our office in valuing particularly commercial property. So where are we now? Well, we're days away, that is tomorrow, by the end of the day, we will freeze values. We will then certify values and send the abstract of all of the values to the printer who needs to have money. And when they have the money, then they print the REVAL notices. I poked my head in and cornered Mr. Gelder because he was the closest person to the coroner, and he's friendly about that, which I very much appreciate, just to be sure. Because the email that was sent out about the challenges with our acquisitions and the processing of warrants and all of that, we understand completely. But these three invoices, if they don't get paid timely, then the mailing gets delayed because we haven't paid the postage and the printing cost. If we get close to that deadline, we could lose our place in line. We're there with all these other counties, and it could delay the mailing. And that is catastrophic because the mailing documents are legal documents and they reflect an appeal deadline, a specific calendar date, 60 days from the guaranteed date that we're going to mail the notices. So every year, it's a huge thing to set that date and stick to that date. And so, yeah, we need to be, a little bit of kick love on those three invoices to be sure that that isn't impacted. My staff's totally stressed out about it. I'm calm because we have good dialogue, and also this is also a good opportunity to explain the importance of that, so. Aside from that, I will say that we have some employees that were ready to retire, chosen to stick around for another year, and I'm happy about that because we have some very senior employees that are institutional memory and critical in our process. And when we don't have enough mass appraisers, the folks that do the statistical work, the risk of losing two in the same year on top of all of the rest, it is a huge risk. So I'm happy to report that they find work here happily, happy, they like their work family, and they're, each of my employees are very connected and responsible about the work that they do, take great pride in it. And, you know, they get sick or injured, they apologize, which is not expected, but it's, that's the vibe, you know? And so when one of them's going to retire, everybody else is saying, "Come on, you can make it another year," you know? And that, the consequence of that is we have a little bit of stability to work with for the next 12, 18 months or so. And then we're going to be faced with that challenge, right? So that's sort of the state of the state. And I haven't attended one of these meetings before. My hope is that there is dialogue and questions and answers, and so I really want to open up to that and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Assessor, for the update. Last time we met, you had mentioned the Board of Equalization, and I'm wondering, do you have any update on that? Is the process moving along? Are you still seeing delays? What is...
Well, of course tragically, BOE Commissioner Morrison has passed away. He was an anchor, he's been an anchor for my entire career, so a steady individual committed to the independent due process that the board, you know, provides. And I think he's, I heard he's been replaced by Mr. May, who worked in the Assessor's Office under, boy, it might have been under Sullivan.
Even before that.
Even before that, so a long time ago. So he's had a long time out of the office, but he's had a long background in property value, and so we're optimistic, you know, that leadership won't change that much. But that in and of itself has affected the refiring of the BOE and their productivity. I know that there's been dialogue with Department of Revenue, where they have reached out and prioritized Thurston County for some evaluation and mentoring, I guess is the way to say it gently. We're not yet seeing the results of that, but we're optimistic that it's on a good path. Our concerns remain that in this county and in one or two other counties across the state, the appeal deadline, which by statute is the deadline to fire value appeal. And then by statute, there is an exception that's quantified as 14, 15 days. Should the taxpayer be remotely vacationing on a boat, is one of the examples, like I was just recently, or had a medical concern, they have an exemption and an additional period of time. In our county, for the longest time, that appeal deadline has not been a rigid deadline. And it was explained to me once by the clerk of the board that, when they, this was back when they were understaffed, this is before some of your time, but when they were understaffed, they were... When you get an appeal and it's not complete and it's not legally qualified as a complete appeal, the Board of Equalization has the ability to send out a letter and say, "These are the deficiencies in your appeal. If you wish to proceed, you need to meet these deficiencies, respond by so-and-so date." Well, when they were understaffed, they didn't have the staff to get those letters out, and so they didn't feel that they could enforce the deadline because they didn't have the staff to get the letter out. I don't totally agree with that, but it also has merit, I mean, in a fairness world. And I think that's kind of where they are now in that still, months after the appeal deadline, we're still getting appeals, right? That are, that are just recently became valid appeals. So that continues to be a concern, Commissioner, because when that wasn't happening, we had a 60-day period, we had another 15 or 20 days to get the list, which is totally workable. But at that point, we would know how many appeals we had to respond to during the year, so we were able to set a business plan and reassign people as necessary to get that work done timely and stay ahead of the Board of Equalization's hearings. But when it's, we're continuing to get a bunch of appeals six and eight months after the appeal deadline, it's impossible to do that. So if we had, if we were flush with staff, we just would, you know, when it comes, we'll just jump on it and get it done, you know? But we're not flush with staff, and so that has, for five or six, seven years now, that's been an ongoing challenge in managing a very important workflow. Secondly, the problem of when the board holds a hearing and they make a determination known as an order, they issue an order, which is the record of the determination that they make, that's when the taxpayer finds out whether they won or lost, to be, you know, kind of graphic about it, they win or lose, it's just the way it is. And until they get that order, they're frustrated at the BOE, they're frustrated at me, they're frustrated at you because they're not being respected in their due process, right? And those orders were for several years, were six months and at one point a year late. And so we, assessors went to the legislature and put in statute that those orders had to be issued in a specific period of time. My memory is it was 45 days, but I could be wrong. But again, we're way outside that, and so this is why Department of Revenue is interested in trying to mentor and get things back on pace. That's perhaps more important than the fact that the board is now two years behind in holding hearings, which itself, that's the third challenge, which is, and that's an approximation. That's a big challenge. What happens when there's a backlog, whether it's in my office or at the BOE, and it can exist in both places? When I was elected, there was a three-year backlog in my office. And so when we extinguished that backlog, worked through it, got the work done, we simply pushed the backlog to the Board of Equalization, and it took a few years to get it through the Board of Equalization. And then the backlog was so big that the wave of appeals to the State Board of Tax Appeals overwhelmed the State Board of Tax Appeals. And they had to go to the legislature for more funding to work through because all, the entire state was being delayed by State Board cases because of the wave of work that came from Thurston County and actually from King County at the same time. And so stability, I'm sorry, a long answer, the stability at the BOE is incredibly important. And it's, you know, you all have the legislative authority to fund and oversee and appoint people who will address those issues, and I think you're doing that. You know, I think you're making the best effort at that, but we're still not there. So it's a key concern for us because there are so many pieces of work that are unavoidable. I mean, they're foundational for our office, inspecting all the properties, handling the exemptions. When appeals are backlogged several years, appellant's in the current year don't want to dialogue about their value. They're angry because their appeals haven't been heard, and so then we have more appeals to respond to, every year, more and more and more. It's like pollination, you know? And so that's where we are today, and if we can get that under control and get caught up so that we and the BOE are caught up working on current year cases, I could reassign an FTE in my office to other things, right? Right now, I can't do that. Thank you for that question.
What's your assessment of the solution to that? What would you suggest?
So Commissioner, I'm not involved in enough of the day-to-day workings to speak too freely without being disrespectful, to be honest.
I don't, I don't know the deal that well myself, I was hoping to learn something.
But I, but I, some things I would, would be good to look at or some questions that may be good to ask, and we don't ask them because it's, it's an arms-length, independent thing, you know? But it would be interesting to check in to see if the, if the BOE is intending to hold hearings with individual examiners, which is an idea that has worked in other counties. And I know that Department of Revenue, because I have spoken with them, they have suggested that. That would allow the three members of the board, and in some counties, they're using alternates, but that's a, that involves training and more supervision and more staff to supervise, so it gets more complicated. But those three theoretically could, could hold three times as many hearings. And then they make a recommendation after each hearing, each hearing examiner.
So the hearing would be held by one commissioner?
And then it comes back to the full board, and that commissioner explains the choice they made and defends it, and then they vote to adopt or change the ruling. And so that system seems to be a proven method to get through a backlog. It's not with... It's not without wreaking havoc in our office, however, because, so, so, so this is what I, the reason why I reached out to DOR, because I heard that discussion was happening and I wanted to be sure that there was some coordination. Because if you snap your fingers and they start holding three times as many hearings, then pretty soon they eclipse where we are. And so, so, you know, we need to get the, in three months, we're going to start holding three times as many hearings, right? And then, then, then we gear up and keep providing the work for that. And that's how you'd go about that smoothly. So that's one question I would ask, a thing I would explore. The not issuing the orders timely, honestly, they're administering your due process as the county legislative authority. And where I, I will say, where I am Commissioner, I would be pretty insistent that that due process be carried out timely. If you can't be current on the hearings, that you issue the orders timely. Because it is just so offensive to the taxpayers. So, and it's administrative time. So it could be that the solution is that there needs to be an infusion to help write those orders.
Is that, so you mentioned before, like mentoring from DOR. Is that where they're coming in? What kind of mentoring are we talking about? And how does it connect to the solutions and the problems? Is it about how to get orders done more efficiently? Or what kind of help are they providing?
So for, on and off again, for six or seven years, the relationship between DOR and the BOE has been very stressed. So we had a commissioner at one time who, from this county, who wrote a, published a book on how BOEs should administer appeals. A bit conflicted with Department of Revenue's manual for how to administer appeals. Department of Revenue by law regulates the assessor and the BOE. Things were at a low point at that point, right? And BOE wanted to meet with, or the, DOR wanted to meet with the BOE. The BOE lawyered up for those meetings and wouldn't, you know, would require questions in advance and all kinds of stuff. And there was a lot of stress back then. So I, so I think that neither party benefited from the rancor in that period. And I think that Department of Revenue is being very careful and uber-respectful and still trying to educate and mentor anything short of regulating, which is the next step. And so I think there's been some dialogue. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner, yeah, I think you had some dialogue with somebody at DOR, which we appreciated. We just want you to be informed. I'm not here to beat up on the Board of Equalization or their staff. It's a hard job and being, if they are understaffed, it's totally stressful to be in that situation. So, so I don't know exactly what the answer is, Commissioner, except that it might be good to explore where they are and what their plan is and determine as a legislative body as to whether that works for you or whether you need to apply resources to get it where it works for you. If that's fair.
So that, this book, like what, how long ago was that?
Lawyer, lawyer wrote that book, wasn't he a lawyer?
Twenty years ago or 10 years ago, five years ago?
I think it was seven, maybe, years ago.
Yeah, maybe, just before I got on, I think.
Yeah. It was, it was pretty disturbing, frankly, because, because we were in, in pretty much the same place we are today, where amount of work we devote to responding to appeals is disproportionate to other counties. We have a population in Thurston County. Goes back to all the state and government workers, you know? Where everybody's kind of, take on government, hell yeah, you know? And I love living here and I love that dynamic, but I feel it a little more directly as the assessor in the number of appeals that we see. The same dynamics true in King County. Just a highly engaged population and an enormous population. But, yeah. Challenge.
Anything else for the assessor? Appreciate you.
All right, well, thank you for your time. Appreciate each one of you, your jobs. I don't think, I think my job's easier than yours, so.
This week, maybe.
Thank you.
Anyone's ever missing sock from the laundry? Check your dad's dress shirt.
What?
That's what I just found.
My wife's sock.
He's a magician.
I was like, what is this?
Twenty years.
I forgot my sleeve.
Play cards with that guy. It's pretty funny.
We got a whole pile of them, so I'm going to go through all my shirts.
Well, proof we can all laugh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, coroner's up.
Funny.
Yeah?
Do you just feel it?
Yeah, I was like, what is this? I knew exactly what it was, because I do all the laundry folding in the house. Like, yeah, I know it's not bad. All right, coroner time. Good afternoon, coroner.
Oh, this is Tracy. She used to be my lead. Stepped down, but I still use her as my go-to person for this because I don't have admin support for this, so. So thanks, Tracy. So my name's Gary Warnock and I'm the Thurston County coroner. And to my right is Tracy McCullough. As I said, she used to be my lead investigator and she is one of six investigators that I have in the office. So I've provided you with a snapshot of the last, I think it's the five years, yeah, five years of caseload and costs. If you start at the bottom, 2019, we did, let's see, 22 externals, 97 autopsies. We had eight infants that year, five homicides, and then two limited partial examinations.
Gary, what do externals mean?
It's where they just don't have to go in and open the body. It's just a visual, a visual inspection of the body. Scars, tattoos, any injuries, and everything is photo documented as well.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? When is there like just an external versus an autopsy? Is it, they come from a hospital and so?
Could be a suicide death or it's a through-and-through gunshot wound. It's pretty self-explanatory, yeah.
Okay.
Overdose deaths, we can do them on those as well. Yeah, that's, anything else as far as externals on the cases?
The doctors try to limit how many autopsies they do, the full autopsy. So another option is the external only.
And that's based off medical history as well. So if they don't have significant medical history and we've drug overdose or any external injuries, then there's a good chance that that person's going to be a candidate for a full autopsy.
Thank you.
And then drug-related deaths, down in 2019, we had 47. And then from 47 all the way up to this year, or even to complete last year, you'll see the rise, and that's just, basically, it's a fentanyl. I would say 90% fentanyl related, it's mixed with other drugs. And then the cost there for total exams was $187,800. And then in 2020, if you can just read those lines there, we had 56 drug-related deaths. And then 223,000 was expended in examinations. Let's see, in 2021, 112 drug-related deaths. And the total cost for all examinations for all of our cases brought in was 300, basically 394,000. And then the big jump in overdose deaths from 112 to 156 in 2022, costs for examinations was $515,000. 2023, we went from 156 down to 151 drug-related deaths. And then total expenditure for autopsy was 585. And then current year-to-date, we're at 79 drug-related deaths, overdose deaths, and to date have spent $366,000 in autopsies. And then over the years, our cases that we bring in, so from 2019, we had a total of 2,553 deaths. And then in that year, we investigated 318. 2020, we had basically 2,650 deaths, and we investigated 338. In '21, we had 300, or 3,069 deaths reported. And we investigated 451 of those. 2022, 3,145 deaths reported, and we investigated 475 of those. And in 2023, 2,866 reported deaths, and we investigated 433 of those. And then to date, this is from last week's numbers, I think, yeah, total deaths reported for last, since last week was 1,724. And so far this year, as of last week, we investigated 270 of those cases.
Gary, when you, when you talk about the total costs, is that what the county spends? Or is that total with what the state does, some kind of reimbursement or?
So that's what we spent, that's what we've spent. So the state will reimburse the county. So this figure here, the, say, 2000, well, let's go to the finished year of 2020, 22. If we spent $514,800 in autopsies, at a minimum, the state's going to reimburse you 40% of that.
But they were going to reimburse us less this year because we're not accredited, is that correct?
We're going to do it. And it's due by June.
The accreditation piece doesn't take effect until July 2025?
Okay, so we have some time to correct paths.
Correct.
So we would be losing kind of that 40% if?
They would withhold 25%.
Okay.
Can I ask, so it might have been embedded in what you said and I just missed it.
Sure.
So I just connected it up. So like, if I look at the total deaths, it's gone up, but not, not the same amount as the total cost on, you know, on the right column?
Yeah, so, so from 2019 to 2022, the cost per autopsy was, so externals back in 2019, they were charging us $900. And this is just for externals only. In 2020, they raised the rate to 1,100, and that stayed the same for '21 and '22. And then in '23, they raised their rate from 1,100 to 1,200. And so that's, that's still the same. Autopsies, cost of autopsies back in 2019 was 1,500. In 2020, they increased it to 1,700, and that stayed the same for three years. And then in '23, they increased, just a plain autopsy, to 2,100. And then if you go down to, let's see, back to '19, infants, that was still 1,500. And then they raised the rates to 1,700, and that stayed the same for three years. And now we pay $3,200 for an infant autopsy.
Which also gets reimbursed at 100%.
Correct.
That gets reimbursed by the state, you say?
Correct.
If they're, when, when infant up to?
Three years and, three years and younger. And then 2019 for homicide cases, it was 1,500. And then they jumped to 1,700, and that stayed at 1,700 until 2023. And then they raised their rates to $4,200 per homicide case.
So the fees that I can see here, fees plus the increase to compound?
Oh, yeah, so just to date, for this calendar year, we've already had 10 homicides. Last year, we only had nine. So by the end of June, we'd already hit our, our limit, so. And, yeah, that cost money.
The total death number seems like you're hovered around 2,500, 2,600, but there's a, there's a big spike in 2021 and 2022. What, is there anything that that's attributable to? Or would there be an extra 5, 600 deaths just those years?
Overdoses are counted in that as well. So if then in 2000?
Yeah, I see 100, you know, there's 100 additional overdose deaths. But in 2021, 2022, there's like 600 additional deaths.
What year are you looking at, Commissioner?
Like 2018 is 2,500 deaths, 2019, 2,500 deaths, 2020, 2,600 deaths. And then it jumps up to 3,000, 3,100. And then it kind of goes back down to 2,800. And we're on, like what, what in 20? Is there something that happened in 2020?
In 2022, I can't answer that, it's, yeah.
They haven't been able to do a study on that.
Yeah, was it COVID-related? No, no.
Because that's a lot, 600 extra additional deaths is a lot, that's huge.
Did we have a population increase over those years?
But it, but it drops back down in 2023.
And then it drops down.
There has been a, kind of a working theory, and I don't, haven't necessarily seen a study recently, but where, what happened during COVID was the loss of providers and then the duration in which it took to get actually care from your providers. So that then, that people were delaying care and that could?
So is this a nationwide thing?
I think so, contributing factor to an increase in deaths, not directly related to COVID, but in outcome of a lack of care.
600, 600 is a lot, that's like significant.
That's, that's a lot, I mean, to see that in a calendar year is a lot.
30 additional ones would be a lot, like 600 is insane.
I want to, how many, do you do like?
That'd be a great question for me.
200 in some cases a month.
Yeah. And then the additional 100 overdose deaths from, you know, it just jumps up from 2020 to now, is that, that, that's the onset of fentanyl?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
100%. Yeah, when fentanyl was not in the picture, we were, our community was used to seeing 35 to 40 overdose deaths a year. And then when fentanyl was introduced, it just steadily climbed and then it just, it took off.
But, yeah, that 30 seemed like a lot when it was heroin overdoses and things like that. But then fentanyl is just, that's, that's insane.
Yeah.
Did, when, on the COVID deal, have you heard anything from any of your embalmers or undertakers that you work with, maybe do embalming, about the clotting problem they're having?
I haven't personally, Commissioner, no. And I know a lot of embalmers.
Have you ever asked that question?
I can ask them, yeah.
Could you ask them?
Yeah.
Because there's quite a national phenomenon, I guess.
Like they're?
And it made it diff, yeah, it made it difficult for the embalming fluids to be?
I don't know.
Put in? I don't know anything about embalming. But they don't know that it was COVID or vaccinations or anything like that. They just, the phenomena started during COVID.
I'd find it weird if you did know a lot about embalming.
You found it what?
I would find it weird if you did know a lot about embalming.
So, but I don't know, there is something to it. There was quite a news story on ABC about it. A year ago, I suppose, where they were, and they showed the clots removed and in formaldehyde, and they were interviewing. formaldehyde and they were interviewing, uh, embalmers.
I've been asking one of our docs, see if they've seen it in, in other cases.
Just, I don't, they don't know what it is, but it's only a recent phenomenon apparently.
Okay. I, I can ask.
So the epidemiologist would be the person to ask about that?
They've, they've got access to data.
Yeah.
So it might be a place to start.
Okay. Anything else? You wanna talk about a forensic pathologist?
Yeah.
Yeah, where are you at on that?
Well, I've got somebody who would like to do a contract with us and, oh, Leonard's not here. Um.
Do you want me to?
What's that?
I was like, would you like me to lay it out or?
Lay it out?
The contract?
Oh, it's a proposal. Um, Leonard took a look at it and he said, just take out the dollar amount because we're, you know, that's gonna have to be discussed and everything else. Um, I don't know how long it was for. Was it a two-year contract? Yeah, it was a two-year contract.
So maybe explaining to the board on why a contract and not why filling a position and kind of explaining?
Sure. Um, well, if you look at what we spent last year just in autopsies at five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, if, uh, if we can get a, a forensic pathologist under contract, um, and it's negotiable, the county can still save, uh, probably a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year instead of paying the full, full cost, uh, per case. Uh, cause that's what we're paying now is per case. Um, so if we get somebody under contract, um, they're under contract for Thurston County numbers only. We're not looking at the exterior counties that come in and, and do, um, contract work for my office. So the, the dollar, dollar amount would be tied just to Thurston County numbers. Um, and the number I heard is it's a savings of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
To do a contract?
Yeah.
And if you, if you could hire someone, it would be even more of a savings or about the same?
Well, if you hire somebody, you're not, I'm not, there's nobody out there that's gonna take a position at the salary range where we're at.
So I think the proposal would be to eliminate the position and just have it as a contract instead, just because we haven't had, the coroner I know has gone out with a recruiter even and we just had?
I even went to Pierce County and talked to their chief medical examiner, um, about what the salary range was here. And she said, there's, you're not gonna get anybody at that, that amount. There's no way. It's just not gonna happen.
Do you do a contract with a medical firm? What do you?
Uh, it would be just a?
Of professionals that have gotten together? Same guy does it all the time or they've got somebody they roll through?
Well, there's a, there's a company out of Las Vegas. They, they're called a locum? Are you familiar with locum?
No.
It's a term.
Locum tenants?
Yes, that's it.
Locum what?
Locum tenants.
Tenants, locum tenants.
I mean, a real estate term?
They're kind of like traveling nurses, but?
Yeah, they're.
You were being summoned.
Sorry, I didn't step out.
We're talking about the forensic pathologists, potential contract versus?
Yes.
Our struggles to hire at the salary range we had, et cetera.
Yeah, uh, we had a great conversation, was it just last week? Was it last week?
Or week? Yeah, I think so.
Time goes by quick.
Yeah.
And, uh, the, the coroner's team was sharing that the impact they're having with filling the position, um, and then the operational impacts that creates. But in addition to that, um, that there's a cost associated with that. And so looking at potentially working through, and that's what I'll, I'm gonna be underway with Maria, is looking at how do we create an employment contract, what that dollar amount needs to be, get the language set so then we can try to negotiate something with somebody that then we would know we'd have consistent support and service on. So that's something that I, I think could work and could provide a lot more reliability in that environment versus what we have right now, which is not a good situation.
Well, it's not good right now because our main doc, she, she's been out of town for two weeks and the only two other doctors that I can utilize are, uh, one's in his mid-seventies and the other's?
He's just a young guy, huh?
Eighties.
Young guy.
And, uh, those two are, they're, they're looking at retirement and, uh, if they decide to retire at the end of this year, and I don't have anybody under contract, um, the one that I do use is, would still be freelancing and, uh, whatever. So if we can do something without going out to an R F P, uh, as Leonard was talking about not doing is getting with Maria and, and working that out. Uh, I would rather, I don't wanna have to wait till January one to bring somebody on. If we can bring her on, um, the sooner the better and the county would save money.
Would, would a contract with a pathologist, so maybe a firm, I don't know, I don't know what you're gonna use, but could that also generate more bed rental space or autopsy rental space or whatever you're talking about where for other counties around that might kind of get on board, separate from ours, everything's separate, but don't you rent out?
Yeah, that would, that we'd do, that's going on right now.
Anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
Maybe it would even create more business in that regard?
Uh, we would need, need a bigger facility.
Okay. No, same as jail, no open beds, I guess.
Yeah, but right now, uh, Clallam, Clallam County contracts with us, uh, Grace Harbor, uh, Mason County, sometimes Lewis County and, uh, Yakima.
Well, be interesting if you?
Yeah, we'll run the tracks and see what we can use.
Anything that'll save money and get the job done.
I think the opportunity we have is that there's someone very interested and so you have a, a starting point to work in an area where it's hard to find folks to do this work. So?
They can do other work when they're not doing your work, right? That's probably the idea.
Yeah. But the other counties would come in and, um, be taken care of, yeah.
They might, the individual, the pathologist, might make more money and we'll get it done for a little less money, I guess, basically, huh?
All negotiable.
It'll be a business transaction.
Sure.
Right. That's the key word. It's negotiable.
Okay.
That's the best news we've heard yet from your presentation. You did a great job and everything, but everybody's dead, you know, and it keeps going up. You know? So it's, uh, it sounds like you've got a plan.
Well, I hope to, to see it through.
Yeah.
I talked to Rob about, there's a van out there that we acquired from, uh, Public Health and I know three years ago, uh, when the board awarded, uh, my department some ARPA funds for a van, that, uh, there was a dollar amount there that was figured in to build out that van. And I got an email from Tilly, um, wanted to know how much or what I wanted into it and it's gonna be an out-of-pocket expense for me. I don't have any money. So I'm hoping the ARPA funds are still available to outfit that van.
Maybe. We, we, we believe they may be, um, and I saw an email from Rob, he's already working on it.
Okay.
See, we'll just touch base with the ARPA team, make sure everything's eligible as we're coming down to, um, uh, the eleventh hour on it. But, uh, if so, we'd make a recommendation for the board's consideration.
Okay.
To use some of those funds if it is eligible. So we'll just?
It's very minimal. It's just the lights, um, a radio and I think a, a deck in the back just to hold our gurneys and it's pretty much it.
I appreciate you and Rob and our fleet team all working together to get that project done.
Yeah, it's a long process.
Yeah.
Okay. We missed Emily today.
We did.
She was in.
She's right there.
Oh, sure she was.
Oh, okay.
Hey, yeah, I came in for probably about the second half of that. Sorry I was late.
That's okay. Well, see you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow and thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Good?
Good.
Thanks, everybody.
Guys, we're at the end of the agenda for today. You enjoy.